Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. My name is Joe Baker and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it's my honor and privilege to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One, council members, have you signed?
Here.
District Two, council member John Rodriguez is not present this evening. District Three, council member Chris Parker?
Here.
District Four, council member James Douglas?
Yes.
District Five, council member Sandra Schultz?
Yes.
Four members of the city council are present and there is a quorum present this evening. I would like everyone to rise as we welcome Pastor Matt Singleton, who is pastor of First Baptist Church, to lead us all in prayer. After the prayer, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Good to be with you. I don't know if this thing is on or not. It's a little bit. Okay. Is that any better? Okay. Well, it's good to be with you guys this evening. Let's go to Lord in prayer. Father God, we come to you this evening grateful for another day of life, sun to shine, and you blessed us with rain, and I got a wonderful community to raise our children and to enjoy the life you blessed us with. You know, we know a part of that is being able to come together to govern our city. And the folks here representing the government for us, we are grateful for each and every one of them. I would pray blessings on them in this meeting. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Singleton. We appreciate it very much. The next item on the agenda is item number five, citizen comments. And we have two signed up, one that will speak now and one later on the agenda item that they are addressing. So Suzanne Nunez, if you could come forward Suzanne.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, councilman and woman. I was just coming over. We had a four B and Parks and Rec four meeting or workshop earlier in July, and we were wondering about naming the little league field that doesn't have a little league field, doesn't have a name like the other ones. And we were just wondering how y'all wanted to name it. Suggestions were made that maybe get the citizens of the community involved by submitting names of what they think that that little league field should be called, the only one that doesn't have a name, or however y'all want to do it. I was just bringing it up to see what y'all, which y'all want to come up with, how y'all want to name that. They just wanted to know.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I think it's a good idea. Can we get that on the agenda for next month?
We can. And when we get to that part, we can do that.
Once we reach that part of this agenda, then where we request agenda items, then I'll request that item for next month's meeting.
I have talked to Monk Garcia. He said whatever y'all come up with, that's fine. But he wasn't going to bring it up to his board to the little league board.
Sounds good. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is number six, departmental reports. And the first departmental report is the Public Works Report. Good evening, sir.
If everybody has my report, I'm going to start off on page two with the water month, the operating report. We sent out 41,570,000 gallons to the distribution system. And then on page three, if that, and again, this number is different than the number I just told you because on our water loss, we go from meter reading to meter reading. So let's find these two numbers are different. So on our water produced from wells, meter reading to meter reading, was 38.164 million gallons of water. We accounted for 31,270 through billing and so forth. We had a total water loss of 3,034 gallons, which comes out to 7.95%. And again, that is the best available program that we have available that we put these numbers together with. So it's not science, but that's the way that we conduct our water loss. So then on page four is our stage one restriction report. You'll see the totals from the month. Again, these numbers vary some. And we're still well below our stage two restrictions that we're in now. For our pumpage, a lot of that is due to all the rain that we had during the month. And the guys, I'll give them a lot of that credit too for staying on top of all the water leaks that we have. Because if you'll notice on page three, you'll see that we had 20 water leaks for the month for a total of 272,675 gallons lost to water leaks. That's quite a bit of water. Then on page five, I have a field operations report where I keep up with how many work orders and stuff we do throughout the month. It's hard to list everything, so I apologize for the small print, but it's getting it on one page. And we've done a total of 752 service orders for the month of July. And then on page six, we've got our monthly report for the effluent at the wastewater treatment plant. And you can see there that we sent out 40.22 billion gallons for the month through wastewater treatment plant. And you will notice on that page also under raining inches, we recorded 12 inches at the plant. I do apologize, our rain gauge is not big enough. So we're looking into getting a better rain gauge for the plant, but that's what we recorded at that time. And then on page seven, you'll see we had one sewer overflow for the month. And this is where we sent in the TCQ showing that we had a sanitary sewer overflow. That's also an appliance deal that we maintain. And then on page eight, I put together the water that we send to the distribution and then water that we treat out of effluent. And I put those side by side. And you can see on the difference on the MGD that there were several days we had a lot more water going out to sewer plant than we were putting through the water plant to the customers. And that's due to all the rain and the eye on eye that we have throughout our system that we slowly work on as we can. And Mr. Lynn talked about last month about some grants that he's looking into to help with those issues with our sewer lines and stuff. And so I hope we can work on some of that. And then that brings us up to something I don't have on here. I forgot to put it on, but I got an update today of the CDVG grant for some water lines that we have coming up to replace over on Live Oak and Waco area, Waco streets. They sent out some sealed plans on June the 7th. They also received a TCQ approval letter in August the 2nd. So we'll be moving forward with that. And I have this, I'll get this to you soon of the kind of where they are with everything. The next step is the geo professionals will be providing some more locations for soil testing. So anyway, that grant is moving forward as well. And again, I apologize, I didn't have that on and I missed it on my front page. So that's kind of an update on that. We also, under projects on the first page, I've got the Kennedy Apartments listed on there. I've mentioned it off and on in the meetings. We got an approval letter from TCQ on those design plans to start the process to move forward with installing that line. I know I call it the Kennedy Apartment Complex project or whatever, but this is also going to help us as we rerun this line to get to 181 to better service that area from where this is going to be built on past Glorias and on past out to where the six inch that comes across all those fields and stuff and eliminate an old line that's bored under 181 that feeds Glorias and a couple of other businesses right now. So this is something that needs to be done. It's going to help a lot in that area. But I do call it the Kennedy Apartment Complex because this helped push this through so that we could get this done and kind of justify the means, so to speak, in the long run. On our training activities, we had Kenlock come out, make them load a back truck, which the city does not own. A back truck, for those of you that may not know, is when you have issues with sewer or storm, but mainly for storm drains, but mainly for sewer, we can pump these out. Manholes that we have that we can't access because they're overflowing at midnight and we can't call the people to get them to come out because they're backed up and so forth. This was a truck that we've looked at for quite a while to try to get to purchase. But we have them come out and do a demo that during the month. And it's a real nice unit. It's a non-CBL unit, so anybody can drive it. It's a smaller unit, but you know, it's still a really good unit. We had a safety meeting on trench safety and traffic safety. This was, we've done one before, a month or two back. But after the incident at Carls City last month, I thought it would be good to pull up some videos, go back through this, you know, because a ton of stuff that we do is deeper than requirements until you have shoring and so forth. And these are things that we're going to be looking forward into as we go forward for that kind of stuff to keep our guys safe. And confined spaces, nothing to be messed with. So it's very important. I attended a TWA monthly meeting. These are held every month, usually on the third Wednesday. Next month, all 10, one it's in. Probably going to get this wrong. North Hymn, does that sound right?
That's right.
But I think it's that way.
Toward York Town.
Yeah, somewhere over there. Okay. So in fact, Mr. Rodriguez was at the one the other day. Is there anything on here that you would like to talk about? Any questions?
Questions from the council for Mr. Higgins?
I've got a question. On page seven, the manhole that overflowed, it says here, I guess, like a solution jet and inspect on a more frequent basis. Is there already a system in place where y'all? Because I know in the past, you know, the city would say every Friday, as actually was every Friday, we'd hit all the hotspots that were on the list. And if something popped up and it needed to be added to the hotspot and checked every Friday, is there something in place that's done right now?
We are still doing that. And as we have frequent places without repairs, we add those to the hotspots and time permitting personnel, we try to fix those as we go forward. We have a list that the guys have and then every Friday. We were doing it on Thursday, but we changed it to Fridays because it's kind of a different day, getting ready for the weekend. If you do it on Thursday, now you got to, you know, but back to Fridays now.
Any other questions for Mr. Higgins?
I'd just like to say I'm glad to hear about the focus on trench safety. I was on the scene of a fatal trench accident in Rungy many years ago and it left a mark on me. And that is a tragedy we certainly want to avoid. I don't think people realize just how dangerous it is when you're working in a deep trench. So I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
There's no further questions? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next report on the list is from our police chief, Chief Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For July, first one I have is my animal control update. We did finally hire our second animal control officer. You remember our other animal control officers moved over to Parks. And so we now have replaced him. He has completed his work, his training, and is now working. Matter of fact, I saw him out this morning chasing down a couple of dogs. So he's out there working. So now we have both our positions out working again. His name is Jose Ramirez. He used to work with the, he was a deputy of the Cox County. And he's also one of our reserve officers. So it kind of works out really well. But so he's out, been out about a week on its own. For the month, animal control picked up, they had 34 service calls. They picked up 16 dogs, 21 cats, continuing to try to pick up a lot of cats. 12 dead animals. We took over five dogs to the rescue group. I also picked up three snakes. Animal control already wanted me to make sure I mentioned snakes. It's that time of year we see a lot of snakes. So we're getting a lot of calls on snakes. We're getting more of those. Also one arbidillo we had to pick up and one opossum. One warning and two citations were issued for dog at large. On the police report, I know I've talked to you before about this, but we have one of our officers is out on a, going to be a very, very long-term medical issue. I don't know when he'll be able to return. So that left us a person short. So working with the manager, what we did, we went ahead and took one of our reserves who was working for the agency already and moved him to a full-time slot to cover that. So that's Officer Verentes. He used to work with us years ago. He is a cousin, I think, some kind of cousin of Freddy Verentes. But so we brought him on full-time this week. He just started. We'll do about 30 days training with him. Field training, it's been a while since he's been out police. So we're going to get him back to field training and then we'll put him back. What we had done was we took our traffic in it and put it back in patrol. We filled out a slot once we get Officer Verentes back up to speed and we'll get our traffic back out working, the traffic on Main Street and Fifth Street again with trucks. I hope to have that 30 days or so, we'll get him going. Our reserve officer, Officer Ramirez, is now animal control officer. I know I put a spreadsheet up for you. But he completed a field training program for us as well. So he can now actually come in and stand his ride with an officer. He can come and get a car and then actually go work on his own. So that'll give us another person. At least once a month, he'll come out and work the shift and that gets another officer out there working. Our goal is to get some more reserves, to get them fully trained so they can come out and actually work the shift. Right now, the other one I have, just people come out and ride and another officer will do that for himself. That is our goal. We had 72 hours of training this month for our officers. Our school resource officer knows she's been working the park, mainly the park area during the summer. She's out this week, but then next week she'll be going back to school. School starts up, I think, next week, right? So she'll be back in the school starting next week. Hopefully everything will work out with that. Put a note on here, mark your calendars, October 5th. It's a Tuesday night, the first Tuesday in October. It's a national night out in Texas. Resting country does it in August. Texas does it in October because it's just too long. So two years ago, we did it here in Kennedy. We had a community event. I really, it seemed like it went really well, was well received, well attended. Last year, we didn't do it because of COVID. So COVID willing, this year, we're going to try to do an event on October 5th. We'll do it outdoors at Gully Park. So we can do an outdoor event and be a little safer. But put that on your calendars. We'll have some hot dogs and popcorn and some food and snacks and we'll have a good time. That'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 on October 5th. And next month, I'll bring it up, I'll mention it to you again and remind you. On our crime stats, we did have, I did want to mention, we did see a spike in our burglary crimes in our staff. If you look on the stats, we went, we had this big jump last month in our property crimes. That was mainly from a couple of burglaries we had. We had not had any burglary buildings in quite a while. We had three of them last month. Very minor items taken out of the buildings, almost no value to what was taken and not really sure what the deal was. But then they stopped after that. So you did see a spike in that this month. I just want to mention that it is in there. But if you also look, based on that, our officers stepped up their building checks dramatically. We probably doubled. We went about 200 building checks last month. So they're out hunting, trying to find these people breaking in. So they are doing that aggressively, working on that. So. And that, Mr. Ramirez ended. Unless you have questions?
Any questions for the chief?
I do have one. It's just, it's a very personal question, but I have, you know, as you know, we have Rhodesian hitchbacks at our house. And I have one right now in the bed, the second day in a row. It's been confirmed she was poisoned. And how do we file a report? Or do we just let the animal control officer know?
Actually, if you think she's poisoned, that would actually be a criminal offense.
Well, that has confirmed.
Okay. If you just get with me.
Second day in the hospital.
Yeah, get with me tomorrow and I'll get somebody to take your report from here and we'll look at and see what's.
I'd really like that. There's some other stuff that's going on before that happens.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief, I'd just like to say thank you for stepping up the building checks. As a former business owner here in Kennedy, on more than one occasion, they let me know that I had left the front door unlocked. And that's an important service and you all do a very good job of that.
Well, I tell my guys at night, the most fun you can have is to wake up somebody and tell them their door is open. You know, but it does show them that we're checking and it's better for us to find it than for them to.
Absolutely. Just no further questions? Thank you, chief. The next report on the agenda is from our Building Department and Code Compliance Reports. Mr. Albiar, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. The report this month is kind of consolidated into one report. Previous month, we kind of had two reports. So we're doing everything in the Building Department. I kind of consolidated a monthly report for this one. Towards the end, at the end of the report, we had 67 service calls, seven building permits were issued, no H-back permits were issued, two electrical permits were issued, five electrical inspections, zero plumbing permits, two plumbing inspections, four gas permits were issued, three gas inspections. We did issue three certificate of vacancies for local businesses. Two 911 addresses were assigned to individuals. No dangerous structures for the month of July. No zoning violations for the month of July. We did something new for this month. We did add add-ins. I now have taken over the add-ins for the city of Kennedy. We started the add-ins probably the second week of July. So with that being said, we did, we are in the process of cleaning more add-ins. We did eight add-ins in the city of Kennedy for the month of July. We did two plan reviews. For the month, we collected, the city collected $2,592.44 in fees and permits. The collection station, we had 58 individuals utilize the collection station, which is up from last month, which we're trying to bring that number up as well all the time. So liens filed, we did file one lien for the month of July. That lien amount was for $27,970. So that lien was filed for failure for the owner having to pay the city of Kennedy. Violation letters issued, we issued 10 violation letters for the month of July. That includes your high grass or junk vehicles, whatever the case may be. Properties clean, these are actually private properties that were cleaned by the city of Kennedy for non-compliant owners. We did three for the month of July. Statements mailed for non-compliant owners, three statements were mailed to the owners for work that the city of Kennedy, the taxpayer, had put into the property. Those totaled $1,360. And for the payments made to the city of Kennedy, we had one for the month of July, and that payment amount was for $150. That's my building and code compliance report for the month of July. I think, if I'm not mistaken, there may be one page that's missing from the report I did. It shows from July 1st to July 20th. Actually, I think there was about 10 days or so there that was not included in the report. I apologize for that. But we are, we are doing a lot of effort and a lot of great cleaning for the city of Kennedy. We're making great strides. We still need a long way to go, but with the support of the community and the support of the council, I think we can move forward in getting a lot of these properties cleaned, these vacant buildings demolished. It just takes, it's a process and just people have to understand it's a process that takes time. And when we get to that point, we can assure you that we're going to be cleaning up the community and making it look, you know, the best in Carls County at least. So one thing I wanted to add to, we did have transfer from the street department, Mr. Mike Cantu did transfer from the street department to my department. He's been a great asset so far. He's been working on the add-ins and vacant lots. Mr. Cantu is a great asset to the department. And I look forward to working with Mr. Cantu for the rest of the year. I also want to add for our tire runner, we had a tire runner for July 24th from May to 12th. And that was Saturday last month. We did have 403 tires that were collected from the community. That's pretty good for the first time that we've done this in the last two, three years. So we're hoping the next tire runner, we're hoping to have one in the fall. We're looking forward to that and hopefully getting those numbers up again as far as getting tires from the community and having them disposed of. That's basically my report for the code compliance and building department. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Albiar?
I have one question. One of my neighbors recently asked me if they have a concern about a property in the neighborhood that was occupied and has recently gone vacant and now the yard is overgrown and there's furniture in the backyard that may present a health hazard or a safety hazard for children in the neighborhood. What is the best approach for them to let city staff know about that? Should they just call the main number at City Hall or should they contact your department directly?
Yes, sir. That would be the best recommendation to go ahead and do that. We can go then, produce a work order, then go there and then succeed, evaluate the property. And to see if we can go ahead and not just, you know, maybe we can talk to the individuals and maybe get it done without any kind of paperwork. Stress that in the beginning. If not, then we have to send some kind of violation. But we, we'd like to make contact with people as well and hopefully we can resolve it right then and there.
So it's best for them to just call the main line at City Hall because you're out in the field so much probably.
Yeah, they can call City Hall and then City Hall will email me and then let me know that to contact this individual by phone or by email.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Albiar? The next report is Streets and Parks Report from Mr. Hernandez. Hernandez, President, the ceiling?
Yes, Chief, please, Al.
Okay.
Okay. Evening, council, mayor, residents. I'll present this on behalf of Mr. Hernandez since he's out tonight. The Parks Department, Sports Complex, they worked dragging this weekend in the fields for about seven days. They moved trash from the trash receptacle in 10 days, weeding trimmed around the fields 10 days. During the month of July, the complex hosted four high school summer program games and three field rentals. Park Pavilion, the crew mowed and weed trimmed in the Kitty Park 14 days, picked up trash 21 days, trimmed up and piled off trees for four days. The crew cleaned up the pavilion 16 days. The crews mowed and weed trimmed around the walking basketball courts, bridged the gazebo 15 days out of the month. They picked up trash around the gazebo and all that, pretty much on the lawn 21 days. They did trim the trees for two days up there, and they worked on the volleyball court for two days, two days to work there. They mowed and weed trimmed the lots and the soccer field. Nine days, they picked up trash in the area, 15 days. And before I go too much further into the streets, I just want to say that the Parks team has really done an excellent job out there with what they've got to work with out there. That's a vast area, and anyone who's ever mowed a yard, who's mowed zero turner, knows that it takes a little bit of work and it takes a little bit of time to get it right. Not only do they do this out in the heat, they do it with a ton of eyes on them as well. So I really want to commend the Parks team for what they do. They are always there taking care of our Johnny Bear Field and our Joe Gully Park and our sports, our Earl Keisling Sports Complex, picking up the trash, making sure everything looks good and stays looking as new as we can get it. So they do a really great job for us, and I just want to throw that out there. I know Mr. Hernandez gives a little bit of detail, but I tell you what, I don't envy those guys being out there in the side testing and all.
This year's been especially challenging with the rainfall we've had.
Yes, sir. And I think everyone got to see it, Mr. Mayor, you know, remember we had our fireworks in the park, everyone was out there. Everyone just pulled together out there to make that, the fields and everything look tip-top shaped to help keep things down. And I don't know that people actually understand, but when we keep the grass cut and keep the bugs down, the ants and jitterbugs and all them kind of buggers that might make it unappealing to go to our parks, so they do a lot of that. Moving on to the Streets Report. So the Streets Crew, they, they worked on hand patching and grading for a total of 12 days. They used 21, 25.1 cubic yards of type D asphalt. They patched 179 potholes during an eight-day stretch using 46.8 cubic yards of type D asphalt and 5.1 cubic yards of Patch Pro asphalt. Total type D asphalt they used for the month, 77 cubic yards. They worked on drainage five days and used 68.3 cubic yards of base, and they used 15 bags of Portland cement. They swept for 10 days, which by the way, I'm going to deviate off this report there soon, and hopefully very soon, we'll have our Timco sweeper in time, and they'll be able to sweep using a vehicle rather than push boots. The crews mowed and weed trimmed 22 roadways and three alleys during the month. They repaired two signs and installed eight signs. They used nine bags of ready-mixed cement to secure those signs. They worked on placing barricades during the rainstorms. They came out during the downpour, put the barricades out for the traffic to protect our residents from going in hot water about three days out there. And they dug holes for two days for signs out in the park. They removed tree limbs. They followed, hauled off 10 trailer loads of brush to the collection station. They're pretty busy there. Replaced 12 trash carts, delivered three new ones. And they picked up and removed a total of two trash carts. They picked up trash from the receptacles during Walmart downtime at City Hall, nine days throughout the month. And since Mr. Higgins was nice enough to get his vector license for us, we are now able to in-house spray for mosquitoes, which they did for five days, which we will continue to do. So we do have that. They also used 18 mosquito dumps during the month, if you remember from Mr. Hernandez being up there talking about those dumps. I've yet to see one, but they were. I don't see the mosquitoes when I'm out about, so.
I think they look like little doughnuts.
Well, I'll stay away from them if they look like a doughnut. They did line locates, completed in order to begin a covert ditch maintenance in various locations throughout town. They did some leveling along the basis and Graham Road and Boo Street, did some spot chip sealing. He implemented a preventive maintenance program to help preserve the life of the equipment in our fleet, which is really good. My buddy started doing that. They communicated with three different contractors to get prices to strike at the business part, and returned the department to full staff. We brought in four more people, so we're back up to 10, so we're fully staffed there. And then we're currently operating with five. Of the people we lost, we lost two to higher-paying positions. One just resigned, and of course, then we had the one that transferred to the city to another department. Everybody have any questions?
I just have one on the spot chip seal. It says it's to be performed. Is it to be performed, or is it already?
To be performed, just, yeah. I didn't bring my glasses tonight.
Okay.
Anything else? Hard to thank. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Next item under Departmental Reports is the City Secretary Report. Ms. Bell, if you're comfortable.
TDEM, Mayor, Council. Okay, for the City Secretary's Report for the month of July, the city had one new hire and zero separations. Animal control vacancy was filled. Candidate did start in July, as mentioned by the chief. The administrative position was filled, and the candidate was to start in August. Street and Parks positions began interviewing in July, and candidates are going through the pre-employment process now. And this is the July report, so it's a little delayed. For utility billing, new services, we had seven residential, new services and one commercial. For disconnect services, we had four residential and one commercial. For the fire report, the fire department reported having four calls, one gas leak, two stranded motorists, and one traffic control entrapment. They did not report using any water for the month of July, and they had 22 personnel respond. For the court, court saw 139 defendants and collected a total of $24,587, which would have netted the city of $17,000. And in regards to the administrative position, I'm not sure if you've had a chance or an opportunity to meet Amy Dischardt. She is the new administrative assistant. That was, that started yesterday, actually. And she's going to be taking on the day-to-day operations of Human Resources, and she is primarily going to be working with events coordinating. And I do want to introduce her to Laura Chamber and try to get them to work closely together with community events moving forward, so that when we have one point of contact and we have, we can streamline our bids with the community.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your report. Item number seven on the agenda, City Manager Report. Mr. Lynn? The first item under this agenda item is current projects, future projects, current operations, and or future operations.
Good evening again, Council. Now that this is actually the City Manager Report, before I actually get started tonight, I always wanted to do this, I always wanted to ask, is there a doctor in the house? I'd like to give the congratulations to Councilman Dr. James Douglas. Tonight, the castings have been seen this official. Dr. Douglas.
It hasn't sunk in yet. Literally defended it, and then drank some water and came here. So it's, it's a very surreal feeling, to put it mildly, but I'm just happy to be done. Now I'm going to have to find another job, because I'm not, I'm not going to another college unless they're giving me a paycheck. So, but thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. That is no small feat for those who've ever been to college. It is a well-earned honor. So, we are still awaiting the representatives from the General Land Office to come down to the City of Kennedy and meet with me to finalize the contract. So that hasn't been finalized yet. But given the process we had to go through and the delay and the fact that they did, we were on the 2017 Harvey Grant, and they were working 2015, 2016, then 2017, it's reasonable to assume that they are, I shouldn't use the word assume, it's reasonable to understand that they are behind in getting things done. It's still in the works. Also, the, this ARC money that we've heard oh-so-much about over the past six months, it just seems to be just dragging on. But we got an email from TDEM, and the lady at TDEM had indicated that we, they are looking around into August 1st to September for the first tranche to be released. We have filled out all the paperwork and done everything we need to do to receive that, so we're just waiting on them to release it. And she did tell us that nobody in the state has actually received their first tranche yet. So that's where we are on that. Budget workshop, we've got set for Friday, August 20th at 6:00 p.m. We'll go over the city's budget at that time. I'll present it to the council and answer any questions at that time that you all may have regarding the budget. We'll discuss it and things of that nature, so. East Main, of course, the weather unfortunately has not cooperated at East Main. While I understand things, it's just the weather's out of our hands. And then recently, this crew that was doing the pouring got smitten by the COVID bug. But the general contractor down there was able to find another crew right away, and they're going to begin pouring tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. from Laredo to Morning Street down on East Main. So if any of the residents down in East Main are listening, at 7:00 a.m. they will be on the street, and they will be pouring from Laredo to Morning Street. So I don't know which avenues they're going to need to take to get out of there, maybe Waverly or one of the others, but that's the plan tomorrow. Graham Road, of course, as we all know, has already been completed with the water and sewer lines there. The team finished patching it today. We are going to come back over this, and we are going to mill this road out two inches deep and redo it. However, it's going to take, it's going to be a process we've got to go through. We had hoped that some of our contractors would come in at a certain dollar amount or less to speed things up, and they did not. So we have to follow the whole process of procurement here, which means they have to write an ad, post an ad. The ad's got to run for two weeks in the countywide, and then we'll have a closing date. And then about a week after the closing date, Mr. Hernandez and I will sit down with them, and we'll go through these things, and we'll more or less pick out who the one is we want to recommend to council. And then from there, we'll put that on the council's agenda for September the 14th, for council to actually make the award on that. Then that particular contractor will have 10 days to mobilize to Graham Road, so that puts us right around September the 24th for them to mobilize. And then from that point in time, they'll be given 90 days, 90 calendar days to finish the work, and that sits it right at December 23rd. Now, the hope is that it won't take them 90 days, but we will give them 90 days before they incur liquidated damages or things of that nature, so. Anyway, so that's kind of like the timeline we're looking at. The reason it didn't get posted any sooner is because of me. I take the heat for this. I have not written the ad yet, and that's, that's the issue. So I'm working on writing the ad this week and getting it to the countywide for next week's publication. So I will stay until the wee hours of the morning if I need to get this done, so. Anyways, that will be taken care of there. Building C is completed. Yay. If you've had a chance to go look at our brand-new bathrooms, please do. They really are nice. Marshall did a great job on those. Building A, we're, the people were on site today to continue to work on the elevator. Building A will never really be fully completed until we have our ADA inspection. So in order to have our ADA inspection, we've got to have, the elevator's got to be completed. And then we learned that we still need a phone line for the emergency call box in the elevator, and that we need, the electrical closet is inside the men's room in Building A. And we've got to reconfigure the door, so the door has an arm on it, much like the arms on the back doors back here when they're automatically shut, and they're automatically locked for safety reasons, because you can't mess with the elevators electrical from there, so it's a safety reason for that. So when we get those things done, we'll be able to schedule the ADA inspection, and then if riding hall goes well and we get the sign off on that, we should be virtually completed with Building A at that point in time. Mr. Higgins did mention the CDPG grant that we have going on off Alavo and Waco Streets, the sewer line there. So since they've got the full approval from TCEQ for the full plans now, they can go ahead and engineer to put the big package together, and we can begin to advertise that, put that out for the construction works to also be getting ready to be underway. We also are going to be having another road construction issue going on on 792. We're removing water and sewer lines to the right because Tex Pot is going to be widening the bridge there, too. So just please keep that in mind if you're traveling 792 for anything. It might be more beneficial to run down Fifth Street, pop 719 over, and then, you know, once they start all that, so. The Cruz River Water Line, yes, we did get our downhole video finally completed on 729, but the data hasn't been deciphered yet on both of those wells, so I don't have that data to give to you tonight. It'll probably be in my email about five minutes after this council meeting, so it seems to be the way he works with me on that one. The water bottle test results came back on both wells, 17 and 18. 17, everything came back wonderfully fine, no issues. 18 came back with the iron was a little high. So TCEQ has a couple of standards that they look at. They have their ultimate standard, which is you're within the MCLs. Then you have the SCLs you can be within. And the second well came back iron within the SCLs. So it's still safe to drink, but it's going to have a little bit of discoloration or odor, maybe a little mineralization, things like that. So there may be some treatments we have to do for that. It was, I did talk to them, it was anticipated at the very beginning and outset of this entire project that one of the wells, because it is the Cruz River, would come back with this type of a result. So this was completely anticipated. So, but the water's there, it's good, we can drink it. Looking forward to getting it piped into Kennedy, so. Okay, that'll complete my first part of the City Manager Report. If you want any questions?
Any questions from the council regarding Mr. Hernandez's report? If not, then, Mr. Lynn, you continue with financials?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so we'll start the very left-hand side, like we always do, with the available liquidity. We have a general fund, which is running about 2.9. The hotel motel tax, running about 2.2. The water and sewer fund, about 8.3. And the payday fund's at 2.4 roughly. Gives us a total tax pool right around 8.5 million based there. The cash in bank at the time of preparing this was 867,000, which gives us a total liquidity of about 9.3 million. And that gives us about six months of expenditures, which, again, I was right in that sweet spot. The auditor says three. I've been preaching six for quite a while, so I'm right in that sweet spot. Speaking of the auditor real quick, I just need to tell everybody real fast while I was on my brain here in my calism. The auditor will be here on the 17th of August to do interviews for the forensic audit on the fire department. So I have interviews scheduled that day for him. I do not know if he'll be here the 16th or the 18th, but I do know he'll be here the 17th. So just in case you get a phone call from me, ask me if you can come to City Hall to interview. That's right. Sorry. Thank you for the digression, Mayor. Sorry about that. Moving on to the revenues, we had 504,000 in general funding revenues, which gives us 5.7 million for the year in revenues. And our benchmark number was 83.33 percent is what we're benching to. We're about 52.34 percent. We're getting closer, but again, we're still underperforming our revenues in the general fund. fund. Our expenditures in the general fund was 521,000. The year-to-date is 10.5 million. It's about 93.47. It's coming down, it's within 10 points of the benchmark, but we're still underperforming our expenditures there. The water and sewer department, they had revenues of 638,000. They have about 6.5 million in revenue for the year, which is about 86.59%, so again, benching to the 83.33. They're outperforming the budget by a little over 3%. The expenditures of 534,000, gives them about 5.4 million in total expenditures for the year-to-date. Their expenditures are sitting at 74.78% of the budget. Again, benchmarking to the 83%, they're about 9% less than benchmarks, they're outperforming there. Our overall is coming closer in line. We're overall 86.1% versus 83.3, so we're about 3% off roughly of our total budget as a whole. So, and again, I say it every month, just in case somebody new is listening or watching, that's mainly due to the 3.6 million difference, which goes directly back to the Texas, the right-of-way purchase for the land to get the water here. So. Questions?
Questions from the council? If not, then, thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel.
The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second, and affirmation, majority vote. Items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Consent agenda item number eight, consideration and approval of regular city council meeting minutes of July 13, 2021. Everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any questions or discussion regarding the minutes? There's no question or discussion, I would entertain a motion on number eight.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular city council meeting minutes of July 13, 2021.
I'll second.
Mayor, may I enter a row?
Yes.
The consent agenda is for a single motion, so you would get a single motion for both right on to number eight and the same vote.
Okay, okay. Any questions regarding financials? If there are no questions on either eight or nine, then I would entertain a single motion for those two items.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular city council minutes of July 13 from the item number eight.
I'll second. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the rule?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Bevan?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item under the agenda is ordinance, resolution, other action items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion action items provided for consideration by the council. Number 10, announcement regarding Karnes County Airport nominated for Aviation Airport of the Year Award. Mr. Len, do you have a presentation on this?
Mayor and council, as you know, we have a wonderful airport, and it would be made possible without people to work here. And our airport operator, Mr. Ron Hyde, is here tonight. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Hyde and let him do the presentation tonight. Mr. Hyde, if you'll be with us.
Normally I don't carry a bag around, but you'll see in a minute what's in it.
Good evening, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. City councils, good to see all of you. Some of you are new faces to me. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, but I hope to do that sometime. Mr. Manager, thank you, and also all the folks that joined us here tonight. We have some unusual news, so you know, we talk about all of the bad news that goes around, but we've got some good news, and I wanted to give you a little background on it before we actually make the presentation. On or about 2014, about seven years ago, the airport board, in conjunction with the city council, the mayor, the city manager, you know, started working on upgrading the airport. As y'all know, we had funds come available through the generous Eagle Ford Shell over here, and we decided we need, it was time to upgrade, and we went to work. And it was a concert of a lot of work between the city council, the mayor, the city manager, the TexDOT Aviation in Austin, which did a marvelous job of working with these, as most of you know, projects, you can lever your position with the money you have with the state and then obtain funds from them. And certainly, we wanted to lever everything that we could to obtain the best bang for the buck all the way around. We hired a engineering firm, Garber Engineering, and they're still with us today, and they did a marvelous job of helping us, guiding us through the whole process of upgrading the airport and what we needed to do. Just some of the things that we've done at the airport, where we actually have built a new runway and have new lights on it. That's about a, you know, one and a half billion-dollar task right there to get that done. We did new taxiways and lights. We did a new self-curb fuel system with 100 low lead and Jet A. We put a new automatic weather observation state of system in. We put a wildlife fence in. We added new ramps for parking the airways or airplanes. We upgraded the tea hangers facilities. We purchased some land, and we had to acquire some navigation easements in order to make sure that the airport met all the FAA standards as well as TexDOT Aviation. And so we also had to obtain a new survey for the airport, which we did. And then we completed here recently an airport layout plan, just this last month, that the city approved, and it's a plan that takes our airport from where it is today, looks into the future, and they break it down into the short term, the immediate, intermediate term, and then the long term. And we've just got that, and we want to start working on that. This award, which I think on your deal is said to consider receiving the award, well, we have received it, and it's been my pleasure tonight working with our airport board. The airport board consists of Buddy Gully, who's our chairman, I think Buddy's right over here, and we have H.J. Connick, also a member of the board. We have Bob Alexander, who's the vice chairman of the board, along with Joey Newberry and Justin Fudge. So, they have worked diligently alongside, worked together with the city council, the mayor, the manager, the city manager, along with the engineering and the TexDOT Aviation. We've had numerous meetings in putting things together. But, I got a call last Thursday, and I was totally not expecting this. I got it from Mr. Gully. I couldn't attend the airport conference, but he was there, and they started the presentation of showing what is the airport that they're naming this year is the Airport Award for the State of Texas. And he started looking at the slides that they came up, said, "You know what? That looks a lot like our airport." And then the next slide came up, says, "You know, our airport used to look just like that." And then, I might tell it as good as he can tell it, but then another slide comes, "Dang, that looks like our airport." Those people went right through what we did. So finally, they show a picture of the overall thing, and it includes the grain bins that are next door to it, and said, "That's our airport." And sure enough, they announced that the winner this year is City of Kennedy, Kennedy Regional Airport. So tonight, I'm going to reach down here, my bag, and I have a plaque to present to the city, and it says, "This is the 2020 General Aviation Airport of the Year Award is presented by the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Divisions to the Karnes County Airport, Kennedy, Texas, and the City of Kennedy." So I'd like to present this to whomever would like to come forward. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Can we clap for them?
You make five.
Congratulations, Ron. Congratulations to everyone here.
I guess I should give you all a warning. Okay, one, two. One, two. She needs to listen.
This is wonderful. Congratulations, Ron. Great news. We produce some great news, and we have an outstanding airport for anyone who's familiar with it like I am. It's an important part of this community, a critical part of this community, and it's been a great thing for the greater community, especially the Eagle Ford Shell, and all the different business development opportunities that have gone along with that, and we want to congratulate you all, everyone that's here tonight. Congratulations, thank you.
I had to keep this short.
The next item on the agenda is item number 11, consideration and possible action to approve a request to vacate and replat Pan-American subdivision in the City of Kennedy, Karnes County, Texas, block 3, lots 9, 10, 11. As shown on the plat of record in Cabinet A, page 42 of the plat records of Karnes County, Texas, to be known as Lot 9A, Block 3, in the Pan-American subdivision, and to be further known as 106 Crosley Street. And the presenter on this is our building official, Mr. Albion.
Counsel, based in your packet, you'll see, you'll find the maps for the vacate replat. Let me just give you a little history on the vacate replats. Vacate replats are done by the citizens of Kennedy, basically to come in and be able to develop their property. Our zoning ordinance regulates and dictates that in order for you to develop your property, it is one, you have to have one structure, one dwelling per plat in mind. This individual here in Crosley Street, if you can see, there's already an existing mobile home. The property owner decided to go ahead and vacate, replat his property for the sole purpose that in the future, he may replace that mobile home with an upgrade mobile home in the near future. And with that being said, if he does that, he can go ahead and, he had to vacate and replat his property. If you notice, there's three lots, of course, you can't put a structure over those three lot lots. So what he did was he vacated those three lots and combined it into one lot. Now, he's able to go ahead and develop in that property that you see there, we have building setbacks. You can develop within those building setbacks. In the future, I think he's going to go ahead and upgrade and put another manufactured home there. But that's basically a vacate replat. You're getting the subdivision, and you're basically changing the subdivision to accommodate, you know, whatever you want to build for the purpose of developing the property. So, this individual came in, we had a planning and zoning meeting August 5th, last Thursday, and we went ahead and got it approved, and with that being said, we want to go ahead and send it to the city council for final approval.
Any questions from the council on this item? Any further discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request as stated in the agenda item 11.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the rule?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Bevan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Albion. And you're going to be presenting also the next item. Next item on the agenda is number 12, consideration and possible action to approve a request to vacate and replat Pan-American Number 1 subdivision in the City of Kennedy, Karnes County, Texas, block 1, lots 20, 21, 22. As shown on the plat of record in Cabinet A, page 42 of the plat records of Karnes County, Texas, to be known as Lot 20A and Lot 22A, Block 1, in the Pan-American Number 1 subdivision, and to be further known as 900 Maytag Street and 902 Maytag Street respectively. Mr. Albion?
Basically, this is going to be the same property owner. This property owner also came in, asked for a vacate replat, and if you look at your map on that one, there's three, there's three platted lots from the original subdivision. If we apply the building setbacks to each individual lot that we have there, there is no possible way that he could go ahead and develop the property, these lots, the way they were before, lots 20, 21, and 22. So basically, he came in, replatted the property, he made it into two lots, enough to meet the minimum requirement for building and development purposes. He plans on bringing in two single-wide mobile homes in the future, and I think there'll probably be sometime this week, he'll bring in one this week. And with that, we went ahead and submitted this to the planning and zoning meeting as well on August 5th. They went ahead and approved it, and now we're here in council for final approval for the vacated replat for Maytag.
Any questions from the council on this item? Any further discussion on this item? If not, I would consider a motion on item number 12.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for replat as stated in the agenda item 12.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the rule?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Bevan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Albion. Item number 13, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance number 21-10, an ordinance affecting participation of city employees in the Texas municipal retirement system, granting the additional rights authorized by Section 854.202G of Title VIII, Texas Government Code, as amended and prescribing the effective date for the ordinance. The presenter on this is City Manager William Len.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, before I begin this, I just would like to take just one moment, Mayor, if it's okay, I would like to acknowledge someone that's here tonight. Ms. Dubnik, the chair of the PNC, came tonight, just in case you all had questions regarding Mr. Albion presented. Fortunately for everything, you didn't. Unfortunately for Ms. Dubnik, who took her time to come here, you didn't. Ms. Dubnik, I want to say thank you for showing up this evening on behalf of the PNC, just in case. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, so, about a year and a half ago, I stood in front of the city council, and they asked me all sorts of questions in an interview, things I would like to do, things we wanted to do for the team, what was my plans, this kind of stuff. Essentially, I just outlined real quick that I'd like to see the City of Kennedy go from 1:1 match to a 2:1 match, as well as get down to a 20-year retirement and get to a 7% TMRS rate. Those are the three things that municipalities throughout the state are doing. It helps with employer retention, and it's an all-around good thing. During the interviewing process for the city secretary, it was discovered that Ms. Bevan has already had experience in working with TMRS to do this, and when we brought her aboard, it was a perfect match between the desire of the city to do what we could to help retain our employees and then invest back into them, and Ms. Bevan's a help retain our employees and then invest back into them, and Ms. Bevan's experience in doing this. And tonight, two items on the agenda are culmination of that and Bevan's effort. First one that we're addressing here right now is moving us from a 25-year retirement, which we currently are, to a 20-year retirement. There is a chart there, if you would just like to take a look at that. I just did a little bit of numbers. The top part is the 25-year chart, and the bottom number is the 20-year chart. As you can see, there are only 240 out of 886 municipalities that are with TMRS that have a 25-year retirement. Essentially, what that means is I can work for the city for five years. I can invest it. I really can't claim all my money until I've worked for 25 years. It's a long time to have to work someplace. If you look at the bottom one, I'm the 886, 646 municipalities have the 20-year. So roughly, if we throw that into a ratio, 2/3, or 75% of the municipalities have the 20-year, and only about 25% municipalities have the 25-year. So we're kind of behind the times to blow into the gene pool there. It's kind of time for us to move from the 25 down to the 20 and join that. It does make for Bevan morale, because people like to work for places they know, hey dude, if I can work there for 20 years, I can try. And then I can maybe still be young enough to go get another job. Kind of like the military, put in your 20, go get another job. So anyway, that's what this is about tonight. Anybody have any questions on this particular one about what I'm trying to do here?
I do have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So with this, if this were to pass tonight, you said rather than a one-to-one match, it would be a two-to-one.
That would be the next.
Oh, okay.
That's the next item on the agenda. This one is just the retirement. And there is a difference in the beginning dates. On the retirement, we can choose whatever date it starts, but it has to start at the first of the month after you all approve. So today's the 10th, the earliest we can start this will be September 1st. That is why the ordinance is written for September 1st.
I know one of our challenges has been employee retention. Do you believe this will really take us a step closer to reaching that level that we've been trying to get for years and years?
I don't honestly think that this will just help with retention. I believe it'll help with attraction as well. I believe we'll find we should be able to get more higher quality candidates out of the town, especially with the millions of people coming back to work. So I think this is something that people do really look at. We have a couple of people that this will affect immediately upon passage, honestly. Whether they would choose to stay with the city or not, I don't know. But I do know that that's the mindset of a lot of people. Nobody wants to work like my grandfather did for 45 years to retire from a place. And if we can offer them a 20-year retirement, we just start to begin to set ourselves apart as employer of choice rather than an employer of last resort.
Any other questions from the council? Any further discussion on this? If there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion on item number 13.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-10 as stated in the item 13.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor O'Nance?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas? Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 14, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance number 21-11, an ordinance authorizing and allowing, under the Act governing the Texas Municipal Retirement System, updated service credits in said system on an annual basis for service performed by qualifying members of such system, when the effective date of the allowance are members of the City of Kennedy, providing for increased prior and current service annuities for retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees of the city, providing for a change in the municipal contributions to the current service annuity reserve at retirement of the employees of the city, and establishing an effective date for the ordinance. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, take two. This is the one where we're gonna discuss moving from what is a one-to-one match to a two-to-one match. So let me give you a brief explanation of how it actually works, so you can understand from a municipality standpoint what we're talking about. And whenever I start to go through the chart and that, you'll see the numbers and you'll say, oh, that makes a little bit more sense, okay? So if you come to work for the City of Kennedy, we say, we're gonna match your retirement one-to-one. And you have a 5% mandatory reduction for TMRS. So just keeping the numbers simple, we'll use $100 as your salary, 5% of that would be $5. So what the employee thinks is, I put in $5, the city puts in $5. But that's not true, okay? The employee puts in $5, the city may put in $2.97, because we get the benefit of a pooled account and investing by TMRS. So we get interest on ours. But what that means to the employee is that when I retire, now after 20 years, thank you, counsel, when I retire in 20 years, every $5 I put in, I'm gonna get $5 out. So if I put in $50, I now get $100, okay? And so that's kind of the way it works, okay? So when we go to a two-to-one, essentially what we're telling employees is, for every $5 you put in, you're gonna get 15 back. We're gonna put in 10, you're gonna put in 5. So we're actually investing into the employee at this point in time even more so. Okay, so if we look, look at some of these numbers, there's a chart again here. And as we look at this chart, there's three levels TMRS has. They have the one-to-one match, they have the one-and-a-half-to-one match, and then they have the two-to-one match. So a lot of people might say, well, if we're one-to-one, why jump to two-to-one, or you can go one-and-a-half-to-one? Well, let's first look at the numbers. And more people choose the one-to-one match than choose the one-and-a-half-to-one match. There's 185 municipalities doing the one-to-one, but only 110 doing the one-and-a-half-to-one, okay? But two-to-one, there's 591 municipalities doing that. That's the one that the employees value the most. This is why the majority of municipalities do that. So between the one-to-one and the one-and-a-half-to-one, you have 1/3 of all TMRS municipalities are not doing two-to-ones. You have 67%, or 2/3 of the municipalities are doing the two-to-one, okay? There is a cost difference to municipalities to do that, okay? That would be the next page, if you look at the next page, the one that has the TMRS plan chain survey on it, okay? So if we're looking at a positive rate of 5%, okay, and we're gonna go two-to-one, and it looks like I grabbed the only ones that have one-to-one match on there, so I didn't grab the two-to-one match, so anyone who wants to wait, it'll be later. Down here where it actually says the total rate, okay, we're putting in roughly about 3%, right now, on a one-to-one match. When we move to the two-to-one match, we're gonna be putting in just a little over 9%, okay? That's gonna be the cost jump to the City of Kennedy. We're gonna go from a 3% to a 9%. So what that means is, when we fill out our monthly reports and send to TMRS, we've gotta take the salaries and multiply it by 9%, over 9% to send to TMRS to put into the investment pool at that point in time, so that when the employee retires, for every $5 they put in, they get to claim 15, okay? So that's the way that works, okay? So when we're doing budgets, naturally, I budgeted the budget this year to be reflective of this two-to-one match. So it takes money out of our coffers, yes. But this is truly one of those things, if you've ever done any leadership training, or you've ever done any training with people, they will always say, well, you have to invest back into your employees. You have to build value. Well, we build value in 100 different ways. Meals here, meals there, uniforms, days off, being emotionally intelligent when something's going on in their families, that kind of thing, you know, those type of things we can build back. But this is one way we financially put it back into our team members, is by doing something like this, okay? It is a cost, but it is a cost of doing business. And truly, at the end of the day, of all the assets any organization can have, there is no asset more valuable to an organization than its employees. Not a single asset is any greater than that. So if we can put back into them, that is why I bring this to you tonight, okay? So as the person who's also responsible for the budget, I'm also telling you, there's money there to pay for. So if there's any questions. So that's where we are with this right here tonight, and we're done at this time. So anybody have any questions?
Would this start from September 1st forward?
No, sir.
It would go back to the original date of hire, or?
No, sir. This would actually, unlike the 20-year, which gives us an opportunity to determine which day we want it to start off, it has to start the first of the month, this can only begin on January 1 of the preceding year when it's approved. So if you approve it tonight, it won't begin until January 1 of 2022, and it will be uniform across the board and start for everybody at the same time. There is no retroactive rules.
I have one question. How many years before they're 100% vested?
Five.
Five.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, before you call for comments or a vote, again, I would like to thank you all for all of this. I'd also like to thank Ms. Bevan for the time she put in and using her experience with dealing with TMRS to get us these numbers and get us here tonight. So I want to thank her and thank you all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bevan. And I am, I think we're all in favor of seeing a higher quality of service to this community.
Absolutely.
And that's been one of our goals for a long time, and this seems like a positive step towards reaching that goal.
Very positive.
Building a good team, qualified, experienced personnel to do what needs to be done in the city. So personally, I'm all in favor. If there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-11 as presented on the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor O'Nance?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution 21-06, a resolution of the city council of the City of Kennedy in support of an application for RMS CSS COVID-19 response plan, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The presenter on this is Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so this is kind of a throwback to Counselor O'Nance. You'll remember, we did this when Chief Ash came to us for this. Well, the issue at hand, the backstory is this. When we actually approved the resolution that's attached as supporting documentation in this, we were, as many people are aware, in between mayors, okay? The mayor's seat was vacant at the time. So what happened was, we jumped through a whole lot of hoops. The people were very nice to the City of Kennedy. They permitted me, the city manager, to make all the decisions, even though the resolution said mayor. They gave me credentials to get in to do all these things. Tonight, the reason why we're here is because we are done. We have done everything we can do, and we're trying to get the money now to reimburse the city. Unfortunately, even though they've allowed me to do everything with all the credentials I have, the resolution says mayor. Mayor Baker does not have the credentials, because unfortunately, he was never given the credentials and never taken through those steps whenever he was elected as mayor. So tonight, when I'm asking the council to, we just amended the resolution to say mayor or city manager. I talked to the actual people at the department, and they said as long as the city manager is on the resolution, it'll work for them. All we're doing here tonight, if you so desire, is approving this, which will then give me the authority to go in and press a button, so that we can release like $39,000. If the council chose to just stay with the mayor, then we would have to hirscurry, get Mayor Baker credentials, and get him signed in in order to do this. So this really is up to y'all, if y'all want to go ahead and let me do it. If so, we have to approve the resolution, or if you just want Mayor Baker to do it, and then we would have to, like I said, get him credentials so he can all get to do it.
I'm in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible, so the money can be extended to put to good use. And like, I'm coming to this late to the game, because this started before I became the mayor. And so I said, I haven't fit through the whole process, so that would be my take on it. Any questions from the council or discussion?
Senator.
Senator, very good. Thank you.
There's no further questions or discussion. I would entertain a motion on item number 15.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 21-06 as stated in the item 15.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor O'Nance?
Yes.
Counselor Douglas? Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 16, consideration of possible action regarding participation in the AEP LED lighting replacement program, and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with AEP. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, this particular item on the agenda came to me via Mayor Baker. He had received an email, and he was very hesitant on the email. It was asking him to sign documents on behalf of the City of Kennedy. He knew that we didn't discuss it with council. He knew that city manager and all the city secretary had said, hey, we need you to sign something here. And it brought to my attention, and I did a little bit of research, and found out that this is a legitimate program with AEP. And Counselor Parker, if I mess this up, please feel free to step in, where they will come out into the City of Kennedy and replace failing lights from the old incandescent or halogen lights to the LED lights at no cost to the City of Kennedy. Am I saying this correctly in the nutshell?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay, so this is a great thing, because LED lights are longer lasting, and they use less energy, and they're also bright. They illuminate much better. So it's kind of win-win-win-win-win for everybody that participates, especially since it doesn't cost us anything. So tonight, the packet's here if you have any questions. I know that Counselor Parker probably has a little more information than I do. But what we're asking the council to do tonight is to approve Mayor Baker to go ahead and sign the document on behalf of the City of Kennedy, saying, yes, we'd like to basically participate.
So this will be an improvement for street lighting across the city?
Yes, sir. And as I understand it from Counselor Parker and the young lady I spoke to, it's as they go out. They're not gonna come and just change it willy-nilly. Instead of replacing with what's there, they're gonna replace with the LED.
I see, an upgrade whenever there's time to replace.
Yes.
And there's no cost to us, other than?
Other than?
Is there any cost?
Other than the time it's taken us to have this meeting tonight to discuss it, there's no cost to us, Counselor O'Nance.
Okay.
But we do pay AEP.
Well, I'm reading this, and it says that?
For the lights, for electricity.
If it's, there's no charge to replace an existing light upon failure of the fixture, however, the cost to convert a functioning light to LED would be $137.
If you were to go and change every single light?
If we wanted to change it.
Then you haven't paid the $137 for?
Other than that, it's free. Like, free.
So also, I guess in a roundabout way, should lower our electric bill, since we paid for the lights.
Yeah, well, that's good. It's a good thing.
Any further questions from the council on this item? Any further discussion?
I can see the city getting flooded with phone calls, you know, because one LED's gonna go up, and then all of a sudden, everybody's gonna want one.
Yeah, it changes the color of the lighting. I was looking through the information packet. The sodium bulbs are kind of a yellowish-orange, not real attractive. This is gonna be a wider, more natural light, yeah, warmer light.
Think of the cars that you're driving against. You're driving with your old halogen light bulbs, and you're getting blinded by the white light and a brand-new car coming the other way.
Approve the appearance of the town in that regard, at nighttime.
But Mayor Baker, I want to thank you for bringing this to my attention, so that we can address this properly here tonight. So thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing it on the agenda. They've sent this email every single day for the last 60 days. So they obviously want us to participate. So, it'd be good to move forward. So, if there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three voting in favor, one in abstention. Item number seventeen, consideration and possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing items related to modifying the operations and maintenance agreement between the City of Kennedy and San Antonio River Authority for the Escondido Creek Parkway and possible future changes to the ownership and/or lease of the property as a way to ensure the long-term care and maintenance of the park. Before we move on to the presentation from Mr. Lynn, we have a resident who has signed up to speak on this item, and Mr. Duke, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Mr. Lynn. I've got to say, first looked at the agenda, I think it's the way you led show around this place, he had everything on the agenda just about doing a good job today.
Thank you.
Sir, can we get you to state your name for the record?
My name is Shelby Duke, I live at one-two-five Bluemont Drive in Kennedy, Texas. I'm also on the County Commissioners Court, but I may represent myself as a citizen of Kennedy. I'm glad to see that the Escondido Parkway is finished, it's been a true asset to the City of Kennedy, as well as to our county, but I, as I, I drive it every day, and I look at it every day, and I'm really impressed with the way that San Antonio River Authority has taken charge and taken how they control, or how they maintain the park and how they really try to make it attractive, and always doing some type of changes to it of a sort, mainly as cosmetically. I think that, it is my feeling that San Antonio River Authority should assume full control of that park, of Escondido Parkway. One reason I ask that I say that is because it's in a floodplain, and that's what they do. All their parks, if you go to Wilson County and San Antonio area, all the parks they have are in a floodplain. So, one, it's, they're willing to accept the liability of a floodplain, I guess, to me, it's, 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 it's an asset to the, to the city. Another thing is that they, as city councils change, so do river authority boards, and people who live in San Antonio may not think much, well, what are we doing having a park in, in Corns County, but yet, we don't own it, so why should we even try to do anything else with it? And my thing is that, if they own something, they'll try to maintain the lifelong maintenance and care of the park. I just, I just think it's a no-brainer if San Antonio River Authority can accept, will accept the responsibility of that park and maintain what they do and their, their dedication to the environment and to the cultural of growing things in county, I think it's just, it's a no-brainer. And I ask whenever y'all do have any workshop, and I'm glad y'all are going to have one, that y'all consider, you know, really negotiating and talking with them to try to formulate a San Antonio River Authority park that's in Corns City, or in Corns County, but within the City of Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby, appreciate your comment.
Yes, sir.
This will actually be the second workshop related to this topic, and I agree with Shelby, I think we need to do whatever we can to make sure that this, it is an A-plus quality park, and we want it to stay an A-plus quality park for as long as possible. I think it makes perfect sense for the River Authority to have ownership of the park, and that means they, they have a greater stake invested in the park, and I think there's a higher likelihood that five years, or ten years, or fifteen years down the road, with board members change, or things change on their end, then there will be a better opportunity, or, or like you said, a better, a better chance that they will continue doing what they're, they've been doing since the park opened, so I'm all in favor of this, and this item is really just about setting a date and time. So, is there any discussion on this from the council members or questions?
I want to, excuse me, let Shelby know and everybody else, tomorrow we have an Escondido Creek Parkway committee meeting, and the great news is, it's not done. On the agenda for tomorrow is, we're going to start talking about phase two of the Escondido Creek Parkway, so for me, working at the school, phase two is the most exciting. So, that meeting starts at six, and it's here as well, so if you want to come to that, especially if you're, you know, curious about, you know, what the future plan is, definitely I recommend coming to that.
So, I would like to make a motion, would we put that in the form of a motion, please set a date for the workshop?
Yeah. Do you want to pick a particular date?
I don't.
Mr. Lynn, is there one that you could recommend for this, if we are so inclined?
Well...
Not the nineteenth.
Not the nineteenth, not the twentieth, not the twenty-third or twenty-fourth.
Not the twelfth.
Not the twelfth, not this week. Yeah, let me, let me grab a calendar real fast, let's see. Let's see here, so...
What about the thirty-first?
I was just fixing to say thirty-first.
Is everyone good with the thirty-first? That is a Tuesday. I'm, I'm out from the twenty-third to the third. Twenty-third to the third. How about the following Tuesday?
That would be the seven.
September seventh?
That would be a week before council. And city secretary will be out. And any further than that, we can just choose to put this on the agenda for the fourteenth and discuss it then. Of course, we'll be done with budgets hopefully on the fourteenth, so this would be the next biggest item, along with one other thing we need to talk about.
And that would be the meeting in September?
Right, meeting, yeah, due in September. That would also give the attorney a little bit more time, because if you remember from the workshop, one thing that didn't get explained was, this is only about eight acres. The park is twenty-one acres, and this is, they're only talking about eight acres. San Antonio River Authority owns everything else. So, the attorney, I know, is working on some things with it, but this would give her a little bit more time to do her due diligence, I think, but it's up to the council.
So, you don't want to do workshop, you just want to put it on the agenda?
No, 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 we would come back, what we would do is, like, tonight it's on the agenda, it had to be on the agenda tonight, because I said we were going to put it on the agenda tonight, so I had to put it on the agenda tonight. If we can't come up with a date to have the meeting and off, and before the fourteenth...
Choose a date on the fourteenth.
Then we should put it back on the agenda on the fourteenth, to choose a date on the fourteenth for later in September. See? Yes, all y'all can do is just make the motion to put, you know, to set this aside to be picked back up in September, on September fourteenth. That would be the motion.
Any further questions or discussion? Not, I would entertain a motion at this point.
Then I'll make a motion that we pick this item back up in September and meet.
We have a motion, is there a second? I'll second. We have a motion and second? Yes? Yes, Councilman Douglas. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen, items to consider for placement on future agendas. Does anyone have any items that they would like to request at this time, for any future agendas?
Have one item for...
I have one for Ms. Nunez, yes. The naming of ballfields at Joe Colley Park and Larry Keasling Sports Complex. Mr. Lynn, if you can maybe word with Ms. Nunez on the specific agenda wording that matches her intent?
We will, we will get that taken care of.
Any other items from council members?
Before you get off that subject, Mayor, I just want to say this, provided that the workshop for the budget goes as hoped and planned, there will be a hearing on the fourteenth that we'll have to have before the council meeting, so be prepared to be booked about fifteen minutes early for a hearing, okay? By statute, we have to hold a tax hearing before we adopt our budget, so we can do that.
That'll be for the September fourteenth meeting?
Yes, sir, yeah, we would have that like around five forty-five.
It'd be at five forty-five?
Yes, sir.
Can we see a reminder of that in our...
Yes, most definitely, and I'll remind you all again of that at this point.
Next item on the agenda is item number nineteen, announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. Does anyone on the council have any announcements?
Kids come back to school next week.
What day?
Monday.
Monday's the first day of school. We wish all the students an outstanding school year, I know it's going to be good to have them back in the classroom again, as opposed to what we went through the past year.
Definitely. I do not want to ever virtually teach ever again.
We have an excellent school system, so we appreciate everything you do, Councilman Douglas, and everybody that works in the school industry, so we wish you an outstanding school year. Any other announcements from the council? I have two, this coming Saturday is the second Saturday of the month where I host the Coffee in the Park with the mayor at the Escondido Creek Parkway, as long as there's no flooding conditions, we had to cancel the last one, so we're hoping to move forward with this one, it's from nine to eleven a.m., the Escondido Creek Parkway Pavilion, and it's very informal, we just sit at one of the tables, and we drink coffee, and we talk about the City of Kennedy, and then had some great conversations, so I'm looking forward to it, I want everybody to know that they're welcome and invited, coffees, donuts, and conversations, it's as simple as that. There is another event happening on the same day at the same time, so I would encourage you, if you're interested, stop by mine for a few minutes and then move on to the other one, this is happening at the Escondido Creek Parkway Saturday morning, this is save the date, join us and Finn Attic Angler Foundation for a morning of learning about fishing, with several activities for the whole family on Saturday, August fourteenth. This event is free and open to the public from nine a.m. to twelve noon at the Escondido Creek Parkway, so anyone who's interested in fishing, this sounds like a great event at our new park, and so I'm looking forward to being there for both, and I hope everyone can stop by if they have a chance.
I believe this Friday is the current second Friday breakfast, right?
It's canceled.
Canceled, okay. Cancel that.
Anybody who's going to go, don't go.
Well, I hope we'll be able to pick up at some point down the road.
Are we set where that we can post it, it can be nutrition, as long as there are both the cases?
Let's hope, yes, let's hope we, things get better in that regard. Any other announcements? I'll then, it is seven forty-four p.m., and I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out too.